...till a little bit later into the afternoon. Um, IRWA is throwing a fundraiser. It's called Hats On For Diabetes. That'll be on Wednesday, April 16th. And what they're doing is you can pay $1 and the student's allowed to wear his hat all day. And that money is gonna go to the Iron Range Juvenile Diabetes Support Group. And then prom sign-ups are going on this week, 14th through the 16th for May 3rd prom. That's all I got.
Yeah, thank you. Excuse me. Lynn, you wanna start?
Yep, at the elementary. I just have a lot of dates with things that are happening for the students. We'll start when we return from break on Tuesday, the 22nd. We have Helmet Heroes coming. They will be presenting bike helmets to all third grade students. They do a little presentation on safety and present the helmets. On the 23rd, we have Captain Wattage. That's a MPNL program for all K-4 students. On the 24th, we have kindergarten roundup. And on Sunday, the 27th, Gold Fever Bingo is back. That will be at The Rock, our PTA annual bingo. And then we go into the week of April 28th through May 2nd. Our third and fourth grade will start their MCA math testing. May 2nd, third and fourth grade will go to the Shrine Circus. May 5th, Smokey the Bear presentation. Smokey the Bear will be 70 years old. And they will do a presentation for the second grade. Our Spring Sing is May 8th. Grades three and four in the high school auditorium at 1 o'clock. And I'll quit there and I'll save all the rest of those May dates for our next meeting.
Thank you. What was your bingo?
I'll go next.
Can you say it?
Yep. We'll send it.
Last week Thursday, we had some of our students, quite a few of our students actually attend the Skills Fair at Masabi Range College. They competed against students in schools from across the range. Herman Town was there. I don't think any Duluth schools were there, but there were a ton of students there. And some of our students placed in their competition. Sadie Sten and Johanna Wyroch took third place in the EMS competition. Karla Hedy took second place in engineering. Anthony Barata took second place in industrial mechanical technology. Jared Isaacson took third place in that competition. Reed Millen took third place in carpentry. And Joey Moralt took third place in process automation. And if you've never been over there for that Skills Fair, you need to make time to go. It's very, uh, it's incredible the things those kids do when they're over there. Last week, we had our college writing trip. Our college writing classes go to the college every year and meet with some of the, um, the professors, the media center people, and learn about college research. They do a project while they're over there. That same day was an engineering festival over there as well. Three of our students went to that. And state speech was this past weekend. We sent three students to state speech. Alec Gritzmacher went as a seventh grader this year. Katie Rigstead is a ninth grader who went. And Ann Olafson took third place in drama at the state. So that's very exciting for us. One upcoming date that we would like to invite you to is our senior awards day. And that's May 14th at 10:00 a.m. We continue to do it during the day so that the seniors can attend. Nope.
Okay, Jeff?
Well, I just, I wanna talk a little bit about testing. We, we just finished up our, our reading test. And obviously, at this point, all our results are preliminary because the state hasn't certified them. But as you're well aware, the, in our junior high last year, we had some work to do. Our grades five, six, and seven were part of the reward school last year. They, they did very well. And they appeared to have done very well again this year. They're, they're right on par with where they were last year. The eighth grade was the one that we spent a lot of time with this year. Only 30% of them passed that test last year, the seventh graders. This year, we're actually up to 57. We got up to 57% of them passed preliminary. But more importantly, 75% of those kids have a better score this year than they did last year. So, I mean, we're very excited about, uh, that and, uh, very proud of the kids. They, they worked really hard this year and the staff as well. Uh, one date that I have is the end of the month, starting on the 30th, our fifth grade goes to their annual LEC trip overnight. They do two nights there. That's about it.
Achievement recognition. We would like to, uh, recognize the following people. Caitlin Coskow, Academic All-State Girls in Hockey. Austin Hoyanen, All-Aerohead Conference Boys Basketball. William Olson, All-Aerohead Conference Boys Basketball. And also Academic All-State Boys Basketball. Jake, is it Lapala?
Lately.
Late, late, okay, lately. Honorable mention on All-Aerohead Conference. And also Caitlin Rice for Second Team All-Aerohead Girls Basketball Team. So congratulations to all of those members of our, of our, uh, student body. Okay, moving on. 5.0 visitor input. Anyone who would like to address the board about anything other than what, what's on the agenda? Please come up to the mic, state your name, be respectful. Everyone has five minutes. Who would like to go first?
Please.
Okay.
Superintendent Hildy, fellow board members, administrative team, thank you for the opportunity to address the board. At our last meeting, I chose to resign from the school board. I have dedicated over 20 years of service to this school district, including making many hard decisions along the way. I take pride in knowing that this district is financially sound with facilities and programs that serve our students well. When I resigned at the last meeting, both my heart and my head told me it was the appropriate thing to do. Although some would anonymously have you believe that it was planned that I would be reappointed, I assure you that was not the case. I was caught off guard and was stunned when a motion was made to reappoint me to the board. I must say it was truly heartwarming that my fellow board members unanimously approved that motion. And I thank you all for that vote of confidence. I've had two weeks to think and rethink my resignation. I've decided that what my heart and my head told me two weeks ago was the correct decision for me. Board members, thank you for your unanimous vote of confidence in reappointing me to the board. But at this time, I'm here to respectfully decline that reappointment. Please also know that it has been my pleasure to have the confidence of the voters of this district for over 20 years. Thank you all for the privilege of being a member of the Evolith Gilbert School Board.
Thank you. We could take that up under new business.
Yeah, we'll have to talk about the appointment of a new board member. And then also Mary Surft as the clerk of the board. So we'll have to talk about, uh, one of you serving as the clerk.
Okay, next. Joe, you had your hand up before?
My name is Joe Beggach. I lived in Evolith for the last 84 years. I haven't been to a school board meeting in 30 years. Normally, when we elect people to the school board, normally they are, have sincere backing of the people of Evolith and do the right thing. But you people ought to go downtown and talk to the people on the street, what they're saying about this school, your plan. Now, this afternoon at 12:30, we had a meeting at, uh, Virginia. And Thomasoni was there and so was Metza. And the two of them said, "The site has not been picked." Well, then why isn't Evolith pushing to bring the school at this facility? And you know what bothered me? I was involved in the old heating plant for many years. This, we used to be on a steam line. And I was the mayor of Evolith when we shut the steam plant down. So we made a deal with everybody on the steam line, that's this street here. They'd get a new furnace, including the school, paid for by the company. We did that and accomplished. And, uh, we insisted at that time, the furnace or the heating plant not go in a boil, down a basement where they usually put them. We wanted a new building, uh, level access so we could repair it. Now, I just can't believe the statement I have here that Mr. Forty made in St. Paul. He said, "Our heating plant's on the last leg. It's gonna take $78 million." That's outright lie. And that could be, there is no provision to recall a school board member. But Attorney General is looking at the statements that you've made false statements in front of a legislative body, Mr. Forty. And this is why we got a bill that Thomasoni and, uh, Metza will pass in the next day or two, to recall school board members for Evolith and Virginia. Because Virginia wants to do the same. And people that go to capital and tell outright lies like this, not, I shouldn't say lies, not the truth, should be held accountable. This is not, and your building is 100 years old. How come down here on Jones Street, I read a sign on the way in here, 1999? You know, Mike Lang was the last superintendent. He took pride in this building. That's why the building is in such top shape. Mike and I did a lot of money finagling together. And we've got millions to add, to put a new gym, new band hall, new cafeteria. We did all that. And now you guys are saying, "Mr. Forty, I'm reading you. Old, old." So be it. Yale and Harvard are 100 years, 200 years old. Hey, they're still producing. They're still producing. But hey, these guys from Gilbert, I was just telling them in the hallway. And she got all excited. Listen, Gilbert's gonna end up with no school. No school. You think Evolith can afford to run one little school in Gilbert and one little school in Evolith? No, you can't.
Joe, you're supposed to make a statement, not attack people.
I'm not attacking anybody. I'm asking questions.
You are attacking people.
Attacking Forty? It's in writing here. I'm reading here, you see?
I said, I said beginning of the meeting, please be respectful.
Oh, no, be nice. I am nice. I'm always nice. I spent 26 years in elected office. I was always a nice guy. I got medals for being a nice guy. So, jeez, don't, don't criticize me for that. I wanna do what's right for this town. And the town does not deserve to close this school. Take a list, take a look at all the lists of the schools in Minnesota. How many are under 500? Total students, 500.
I couldn't tell you what they are.
Big list of them, all big. We've got over 1,100. That's a good number. But nobody's talking. Look, I was at the Martin Iron site. It's in the middle of the woods. Yes, we can cut trees. We can build a road. But we got everything here. We got the power, we got everything right here in front of us. If we need more room, we can go that way and move the parking lot. We, we got enough room here to house half of you in the, and you guys wanna close it? You can't close this school. You understand that? You can't. Evolith is, school is the right size. You have to keep it open at least another 10 years, a minimum, that I can see. And don't think you people are gonna close Virginia. I was at, they asked me to go to the Virginia council meeting. You see how they're voting? Solid vote, every councilman, the mayor, everybody in the audience against doing it. I went to Metza's funeral up in Cook, mostly Virginia people because Metza was a former mayor of, of Virginia. Everybody, I don't even know where you are. We gotta stop this. We gotta stop this. Well, Thomasoni and Metza, at 12:33, told a little different story than you people are talking about. The site is not picked. And I says, "Well, then Evolith got a chance." Nobody mentioned Evolith. I'm just, I'm telling you guys, we get that bill passed next week, I'll be going house to house at my age. And we're gonna recall whoever is still trying to take this away from us. So I have to say. And those that are voting against us, you fight, you're wise people. This is a good school. The building is good. Walk around it. Has, have all you people been in the heating plant? You know how it's laid out? Three boilers in a row.
I've been there.
Okay. What's wrong with?
I didn't say there was anything wrong with it, Joe. We never said that.
You know, when we read this, I went down to the.
Joe, your, your time is up. We have to ask someone else.
Okay. I went.
Listen, listen, I.
Five minutes.
I heard you let people go on for.
Sit down, Paulie. You're out of order.
I don't care. I'm out of order. But you're out of order because you let people talk for 45 minutes, an hour, not cutting this man off.
No, I haven't.
I'm telling you, this is wrong, guys.
Let him speak.
Go ahead. Pwn me out of order.
I wasn't pounding you.
Listen, I've been here for 30 years. Don't I have a right as a citizen of Evolith?
Sure you do, Joe.
I've lived in this town.
But there's also, it's called the Evolith Gilbert School District, not Evolith.
Oh, I forgot.
I know you did.
But there won't be any Gilbert once you close Evolith.
We're not closing any schools.
Oh, are you gonna move schools to Martin Iron? It's not gonna be closed?
No.
I'm telling you guys.
I, I understand where you're coming from.
You're making a big mistake.
We haven't made anything yet. We're just, we're just looking.
He did by saying what he did. It's in writing here.
Anyone else?
And you're totally out of order cutting him off.
No, you're out of order.
I don't care. You know you let people go on for hours and hours.
No, I haven't.
Yes, you have.
Only when you were on the board, Paulie.
No, I'll prove it. I've never been the chair. You have. So that's very disrespectful for you to cut somebody off.
We're done. Next, who's, who's, who's next?
That's terrible.
Anyone? Okay, moving on. 6.0, agenda changes.
Uh, I do have one addition to the agenda, and that's under 10.6. And that is Sue Hendrickson, notice of retirement. And that is the only, uh, change I have.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda? So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And right, next, 8.0, request to move any topics from the consent agenda? Anyone? Hearing none, we'll move on. Uh, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Support.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Question on the, um, approving the, or agenda changes. Didn't we say we wanna add the topic on how we go about replacing Mary's?
Oh, yeah, we could add that or.
10.10.
We could do it under 11.12. 11.12, um, discuss.
Board vacancy?
Board vacancy.
And.
And also clerk appointment.
Okay, moving on. 10.0, personnel. 10.1, notice of retirement for Patrick Watson. What's your pleasure?
I move that we accept his notice of retirement.
We also need authorization to post for that position. Pat is the assistant mechanic.
Include that in the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to, uh, accept Patrick Watson's retirement and also to post for that position. Is there a second?
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.2, notice of retirement for Sharon Jensen. Same thing. We need, do we need to post also for?
Uh, we're not going to post for this one. We're not sure yet if we need to replace that position yet or not.
Okay.
So moved?
Support.
We have a motion and a second to accept the, uh, retirement of Sharon Jensen. 33 years, correct? Yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.3, resignation of Karen. Let me see if I got this right. Bragowski?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, we need a motion and a second?
Also, we accept a resignation.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. How long was she here?
This was just her first year. So we would also ask you to authorize the administration to post for a .5 FTE counselor for the junior high.
Okay. Would you, is that okay to include that in the motion?
I'll include it in the motion.
And a second? Okay. Okay. Um, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.4, resignation, sorry, retirement of Dolores Heitzman. She's been in with the district 22 years in Title I. So moved?
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We fill this at the, at the beginning of every year, correct, Debbie? We don't post for this, for Title I. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.5, request for leave of absence for Mike Goodry.
Uh, the administration is going to recommend that the board accept this request for an extended leave. Mr. Goodry has been on a leave already for over six weeks. It's been a medical leave to this point, but he's asking for a long-term leave of absence. That's a leave of absence without pay. And he, uh, the collective bargaining agreement does provide for that long-term leave of absence.
Okay. Need a motion and a second?
I'll move we grant the long-term leave for Mr. Goodry.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion and a second? Uh, any discussion?
Is five years the normal length for?
Three to five. Actually, they can, uh, he can notify the district prior to February 1st of the next school year, and he would be allowed to come back then. Um, so because he's requesting this leave at this time, we know that he will be gone all of next year. So I would ask the board to authorize posting for a special ed position at this time also.
Okay. We can, uh, who made the motion on it? Would you include that in your map? Okay, and a second?
I'll agree to the posting.
Okay, and who seconded?
Heidi.
Is that okay, what they meant? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 10.6, notice of retirement for Susan Hendrickson.
So moved?
Support.
Looks like we're getting a lot of retirees, huh?
Yeah.
It's that time of year.
Would you, we also will have to post for a science teacher?
But we're not sure exactly what the FTE is that we'll be posting for at this time. So we'd like to hold off on that for a little bit.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to allow Sue Hendrickson to retire. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.0, a new business. Approve the summer band program?
Uh, you have a request in front of you from Mr. Schumal for the summer band program. We will have three instructors that will provide lessons to the students. We will have two instructors that will work with the marching band practice. The summer school stipend is $18 per hour, uh, with parades being $100 per parade. And summer band is funded through the Community Ed Youth Enrichment Fund. And there are dollars available for that. And on enclosure 11.13, you can see that the estimated total cost of that summer band program is $6,115.18.
Okay. We need a motion and a second for summer band. Okay. We have a motion, we need a second?
All support.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. I'm sorry. Yeah, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.2, approve the Vermillion Community College Concurrent Enrollment Agreement.
You have a copy of the agree, of the agreement in your board packet. Uh, the fee for the concurrent enrollment classes is $1,500 per course, which is the same as the fee we paid this current year. Uh, the courses that we will be offering through Vermillion for next year are college algebra, American government, trigonometry and analytical geometry, calculus one, and survey of economics. These are the courses where the students take college courses right here at the high school and earn college, uh, credit here.
Yeah. Yeah, what's your pleasure? Need a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Support.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Why is it through Vermillion?
Um, do you wanna answer that, Danette? Why are we moving to Vermillion?
Lake Superior College is the one we've been doing these courses through. And as they've gone through a national accreditation process in the last year, um, teachers can't be grandfathered in anymore. They have to have a master's in the field, not just a master's in education, uh, or a master's in education plus 16 credits in the field. And our teachers do not have that. So we're working with Vermillion. We'll continue to work with Lake Superior College for forensics and genetics, um, as Mr. Strasser will have enough to teach through them. But we had to find another option.
And Masabi doesn't offer this?
Not these.
Okay. Because the requirements are less?
Their requirements are also different than Vermillion, too. So they are still grandfathering teachers in. So everyone who teaches for them now for us can continue to teach. But to have new teachers, which would be these teachers, come into their program, they would have to have that same master's in math or social studies or 16 credits, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? We already have the motion and a second, correct? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11.3, I'm sorry, 11.3, approve the 2014, 2015 equipment budget?
Uh, we had a committee meeting previously where we reviewed, um, the equipment requests for each of the sites. Uh, enclosure 11.3 shows you that on, uh, June 30th of this year, we estimate that we're going to have an equipment fund balance of $82,649. We are projecting to receive $114,245 in revenue. Um, the expenditures are broken down by district and by each of the buildings, Franklin, Gilbert High School. If we approve all of those equipment expenditures, we are expected to have a projected fund balance on June 30th of 2015 of $39,740. And we do always try to reserve a certain amount of money in that equipment budget in case we have some type of equipment that breaks down during the course of the school year, needs to be replaced. The other enclosures, um, which, if you were at the committee meeting, you would have seen, these were the requests from the teachers, um, and these are, or district staff, and they're being brought forward for approval.
Okay. We need a motion and a second. On this?
I move that we accept the equipment budget.
Okay, we need a second.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point four approve the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen technology budget.
If you take a look at enclosure eleven point four one, you have a copy of the technology fund. As of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, we're projecting to have a fund balance of three hundred twenty-six thousand fifty-nine dollars. At this time, we're recommending that we purchase the iPads for the third-year iPad implementation plan. We are recommending that we replace seventy-five workstations and add four gigabytes of memory to those workstations. We may be coming back at a later date and asking the board to also authorize the replacement of another thirty workstations. Right now, we're monitoring one of the labs at the Franklin, and those labs, I understand, we're having some difficulties during testing season with those. So, we're monitoring those right now, and we'll make a decision prior to June thirtieth as to whether or not we want to replace those prior to the beginning of the next school year, but there would be adequate funds here. We do need to purchase some additional network switches, make some cabling improvements, and with our iPad implementation, we're going to have to add some additional access points because access points only handle so many iPads at one time, so we know we're going to have some additional ones needed. With the expenditures that are listed here, we still have a projected fund balance for June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen of eighty-one thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. So, if we do have to come back and ask the board to approve an additional thirty workstations, we would have adequate funds to replace those. We are replacing a lab here at the high school. It's used for instruction, and we are, I believe, at the junior high, and in Elshin, we're looking at a portable lab, so.
I'll move we approve the two thousand fourteen, fifteen technology budget as presented. Need a second?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
Is the third year of the iPad the final year?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point five approve the K-12 summer science curriculum work.
Mrs. Bolt, did you want to talk about this?
Yes, now that's K-two, and if you recall a few meetings back, they came and spoke to you on science, and that was for third grade through twelfth grade. K-one and two felt that they could look at what they already teach to meet the standards and find the other pieces of supplemental materials that they need. I don't foresee this being more than sixty hours of work. I'm going to have a kindergarten, first and second grade representative, and maybe less than that even, because they've done some work on it already. We will do it in early June.
And it's not to exceed sixty hours total?
Yeah, total.
Okay. And eighteen dollars an hour per person? Okay. Okay, we need a motion and a second.
I move that we accept this.
Support. Support.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eleven point six approve the public access channel twelve two thousand fourteen budget.
We received a copy of the budget from the Public Access Channel Twelve Board. They've listed for you their expenditures. We do not contribute financially to the channel twelve. We do in-kind types of services. Their station is located in the building here, and, but they did submit this, they wanted you to see what their proposed budget is, what they plan on buying, or the costs that they're going to incur over the course of the year, so I bring it forward for approval.
We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion for the channel twelve budget.
Yeah? Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
There any possibility of getting us into Dish Network, Hugo, where, you know, a lot of people have Dish and some have Direct TV? Is there any possible way that, you know, we could implement this in with them?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
Unfortunately. But we do have live feed to, on the internet, so people can go on access12tv.com and click on the like button, and you will get everything that's played on twelve being streamed at the same time.
Because I realize everybody doesn't have cable, you know?
Right.
There's a lot of Dish.
Unfortunately, this time, no, they don't have cable.
Okay, that was my only question.
Anyone else?
The only question I have is in item six, where they finalized the budget, it was seconded by, shows Gabe Peterlin, and there is no Gabe Peterlin shown as being a member of their board. There's an Al Peterlin, but...
Is it a misprint, or?
I don't know.
Unless they call him, is that a, I don't know if that's a nickname or not. I don't know.
Never heard him called there.
Those are their minutes, so.
What was his name?
Gabe?
Gabe.
Peterlin?
We have a new board member that just showed, that came, that was the last one.
That's a different name. Yeah, different name. This is somebody else again.
Must be Mary.
We'll check it out.
Check it out, okay. Any other discussion? Okay, with the checking out the name, now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point seven approve the boys and girls cooperative soccer agreement and the facilities use agreements.
We had a meeting where I, we, Evelyn Gilbert was the sponsor of the Boys and Girls Soccer Hockey Program, but at that time, it was the soccer club that was mainly responsible for managing that program. That is no longer possible for them to do that. Because the soccer field lies within the Masabi East School District, and Masabi East was a member of the cooperative agreement, we felt it was best if they became the host district, and they would be able to better manage that field. We don't have the staff available to go over and take care of that soccer field, so the original cooperative agreement was amended to change the host school to the Masabi East School District with all responsibilities for being the host district transferred to them. It will still be on, the dollars we contribute will still be on a per participant basis, and the amount that we're contributing towards the lease of the field has been twenty-five hundred dollars in the past, that will remain the same, so. Administration recommends that the board approve the amended agreement.
We have, we need a motion and a second. Then we can discuss this.
I'll make a motion.
I'll support.
And a motion and a second. Beth seconded, we made the motion. Okay, discussion. Anyway.
Does this affect games for the, for next year, like with the state high school league or anything?
No, we just had a, change our paperwork there indicating that Masabi East has now become the host district, but it doesn't change anything else.
Okay, anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point eight approve the additional course requirements.
Annette, did you want to talk about that?
Districts across the state are being faced with meeting the requirements of the World's Best Workforce Plan, and there's some new legislation regarding transition planning for high school students. Starting with this year, students in ninth grade have to have, have to begin a plan that takes them through high school and through their post-high school plans, and there are very specific components to this plan. So, districts have been struggling with how best to meet these needs. Some are putting advisor, advisee periods in next year. That's not feasible for us with so many shared courses and traveling teachers. Some schools have already required a career class, so they're lined up and ready to go, and a lot of schools are going to the, I forgot the name of the program, that we're not starting next year, but the year after. Round bunch of readiness, thank you. But again, that requires some advisor, advisee time, so we've been meeting, we talked about the best possible way to do that, and we feel that adding a course for ninth graders, they have room for it. It should not impact the electives they've already registered for. We'll take them out of study halls whenever possible. If they need to wait a year and do this as a tenth graders to keep all of the electives, if they're in band and choir, for instance, we'll make that happen, but we feel this is the best way to do this. We're not going to purchase a textbook. MCIS is a program we purchased partially with Perkins funding and partially with my principal's fund, but it's a very comprehensive online program. It's the Minnesota Career Information System. It has curriculum in it, it has a plan in there that students can start entering to use to track this. We've purchased a license through next year already. We bought one at the end of this year, so it'll take us through next spring. And the counselor, Jessica Forstman, will work closely with Melissa Betzelt, who's our business teacher, who created this class. She taught it in another school, and so had some great ideas, and they'll work together to get students going on this career path, this post-secondary path.
Okay. What is your pleasure here? Need a motion and a second to have any further discussion on this.
I move. We approve the additional course for post-high school planning.
I support.
Any other discussion? I mean, I don't think we really have a big choice. I think it's a good program to get into.
We have to do something.
Yeah, we have to do something. We just can't sit back in the laurels and, we'll get to it someday. We might as well get into it now. Any other discussion?
Is this primarily for the ninth graders to figure out what they want to do for the next three years, the ten, eleven, and twelve?
And then some. It's really to, we want them to have a pretty solid idea of what they'd like to do after school, because what they do during high school really impacts that. We want them to be ready for whatever their choice is when they graduate. So, they'll start this in ninth grade, and they'll spend the bulk of their time working on the plan in ninth grade, but they'll have to revisit the plan all the way through to graduation.
So, they can still change everything in the tenth grade or even eleventh grade?
Yep, yep. Registration for courses will also work the same, but most students only are aware of the careers of the people they're related to, so we really want them to meet people who are in other careers, careers that are right here, talk to those people about what they did to get ready for those careers, and just get some ideas for what's out there.
Now, does this also include having speakers come in once in a while?
All volunteer.
All volunteer?
Yes. Yep.
I think it's a good plan, it's probably been needed before this. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point nine approve the UN Stadium Track Facility Use Proposal Number Two.
For the past several years, we have leased some time and use of the Virginia School District Track for both our boys and girls track, and we, they typically provide us with a couple of proposals. We are recommending that the board approve proposal two, which we could schedule daily practices whenever we would choose to schedule them, at sixty dollars per day. We would also be able to host a track meet, and actually, we host two there, and they allow us to do that. When we host a track meet, the cost is four hundred dollars plus the cost of a custodian, and the custodian is thirty-five dollars per hour with a two-hour minimum. And as I said, we've done this for the past several years.
And this is the proposal that the coaches prefer?
They're comfortable with that proposal.
Okay. Need a motion and a second?
Support.
We need a second. You made the motion, Tom. There wasn't a motion yet.
Oh, there wasn't a motion.
Well, then I'll support it.
You got ahead of yourself there.
Getting ahead of myself.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Have we done this in the past, Debbie?
Yes, we have.
We have, so it's just a reoccurring thing that we've done.
We consider it every year, and it's probably coming a little later this year because of the spring weather.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, we got a tough winter, that's for sure.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eleven point ten discussion on the proposed joint powers agreement regarding the establishment of the Central Masabi Collaborative.
When this item was placed on the agenda, the intent was that we would actually take some action tonight and approve this. However, since then, some revisions have been made to this agreement, and those revisions were made based on this document that's here, being submitted to MSBA as well as to Kevin Rupp, who's an attorney in Minneapolis, just to ask them to review the document and see if they would have any recommendations for changes to the document. And both MSBA and Kevin Rupp did have some proposed changes. So, on Friday, the committee that originally reviewed the joint powers agreement for changes got back together to take a look at what was MSBA recommending, what was Kevin Rupp recommending. So, there is another revised document, and I can't remember if I sent it to you today or not. I know I sent it to the people who worked on it to ask them to look at it. Mark worked on it, asked them to look at it to make sure I incorporated all of the revisions. I don't think I've sent it to all of you, but I will send that new revised document to you, so we're not asking for any action on this tonight at all, because it's not ready to be approved. Not ready to be approved.
Okay.
So, I don't know if anyone has anything they want to say about it, or if you've had a chance to look at it, if you have some concerns about the document as it was presented to you, that you would like to share and have brought back to the collaborative committee, or?
I haven't had a chance to really look over the whole thing yet.
Well, and like I said, it's going to be revised, so...
It's revised every time we do get a copy, but the time we get it, it's already been revised, so.
So, what I'll do is I'll try to get that revised copy out to you then.
Okay.
That's all I have to say about it.
So, I'll just make a motion to table this.
Well, it was just a discussion.
This is a discussion, okay, okay.
Okay. Eleven point eleven update on collaborative discussions of MIB and Virginia. Yeah, I know they've had some subcommittee meetings.
Last week on Tuesday, there were four subcommittee meetings. Curriculum Committee met, Joint Powers Governance Committee met. Those committees met here in our district, and in Mountain Iron Buell, there was a Facilities Committee meeting and a Transportation Committee meeting. The other two committees have not met yet, but they're scheduled to meet on the fourth Tuesday, which is a week from tomorrow in Virginia, and the Curriculum Committee, the Governance Committee, Transportation and Facilities will also meet next Tuesday again, but maybe Mark wants to share just a little bit about the Joint Powers Governance Committee, because he's now the chair, I believe, of that committee.
That subcommittee.
That subcommittee.
This joint powers agreement that we did not review, it's a temporary one, and is to be used for the process up to, through our referendum, and then that, this joint powers agreement will end. With that, what the committee is working on, and I'm a part of, is to start drafting what would be the joint powers agreement that would be put in place if there is a successful referendum, if this is going to proceed. So, instead of waiting until that time, we're going to start working on putting together what would be a more final version. We had our first meeting Tuesday last week. One of the things we'll be doing in the second is Joe Soffol, who is the superintendent in Grand Rapids.
No longer, he's the executive director of EIP now, but he was the former superintendent in Grand Rapids.
And he will be at our committee meeting to explain how that joint powers that he is working with is set up, just so we have some sort of reference. And there'll be others that we will be looking at, and how to set up the final. And there'll be others that we will be looking at, and how to set up the final Joint Powers Agreement. Like we said before, the subcommittees will be meeting on the second, fourth, and if there is a fifth Tuesday, they'll get the work done.
Second, fourth, and fifth?
Yes. If there is a fifth.
If there... And if the committees schedule a meeting for the fifth. Some may and some may not.
I had canceled in the second, third, and fifth. Okay.
Second, fourth, and fifth.
Second, fourth. Okay.
The Joint Committee meets on the first and third Tuesdays.
Okay, I attended the... Part of the Transportation Committee accepted because I was early, and one understanding, they haven't been sending out notices to everybody who's on the committees. The only reason I knew about this is because I had talked to you, and Tom never got any notice.
Yeah, I wondered about that, if John Claritchy was given a list of the committee members' names.
What I found out from John was that they sent it only out to members of the Joint Committee, the main board, the main committee. That's going to be rectified because we brought this on. Why are you not sending it out to people who are supposed to be there? They're going to be looking for a consultant on the transportation issues to see if there's some way where they can make the routes a lot more coordinated so there's not duplication. They're going to be posting the meetings and publishing the Times. They're going to be looking at current savings versus proposed savings. And that's all I had because I came in late. The facilities study, what I was told, and I'm on that committee, is that we're not supposed to be looking at the facilities all the other schools have right now. They only want us to focus on the proposed facility for the new location. And we're going to have to be looking for somebody to help us with that, too, because right now, we've got no idea where we want to go with this, how much it's going to be, how many square feet we need, what all they want. I told them, I said, "We don't want to go into this, whether you're for it or against it, and not do justice to what they want to do as far as adding in everything that they want if this moves forward one way, two ways, or all three." And that's what we're looking at. It was a short meeting. It didn't last very long, simply because we need to get a hold of someone who can help us with this. But they want to include auditorium, band halls, classrooms, science wings, vocational, technology, pools. They're looking at also having... In their original plan, they wanted to have a field house, and that's included in this $108 million? Is that what it is? Yeah, whatever it is. So I don't know what it's going to look like when we're done, but I said, "Why go in there and do part of a job?" And if this does move forward, which is at this time, who knows? Do it right or not, don't do it at all. Why go in there and then have to come back in a couple of years and add something because we didn't have it in the original one? So let's do it right, and then all the people will know what it is, what they want to do, if they want to do it. And I have no idea how much it's going to cost to look at, really. Nobody does at this point. The original plan, I guess, was for $108 to $110 million. It included all three schools, and we'll have to see what happens because the people have to vote on this. Once we get everything together, we'll have to have meetings on because right now, even the members on the board don't know what it looks like. And we'll have to go from there. If we're going to be involved in it at this point, we have to do it right, even if you're for it or against it. Do it right or don't do it at all. That's the way I think we should do it. So that's all I have on that.
Okay, the Curriculum Committee met here also, and they were about... Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. I think you're right on there, Keith. There's a lot of questions here that have to be answered.
Yeah.
And we don't have them, you know? Until we get to the point where we have some answers, it's hard to support something that you don't have answers for.
I agree.
And, you know, I'm getting the input from the community. I haven't seen anybody for it yet, you know?
Well, I'm getting it both ways.
And like I say, I'll go out to the vote of the community, and I've stressed this all along. We have to get all the information out there. The correct information has got to go out to the communities so they know what they are voting on.
Yeah. And I can't see having a meeting when we don't have any answers.
No, we don't have the answers.
I mean, all we'll be doing is having a meeting where everybody's going to be pointing fingers and speculating and blaming one or the other, whichever way you want to go with it. But you're right, we have to get the information before we have anything.
Right.
And that's the only way you can do it, is if you do it this way. I'm sorry, Debbie.
Oh, no, I interrupted Tom. I'm sorry, Tom. Just wanted to share a little bit on the Curriculum Committee. We had pretty good representation on the Curriculum Committee, although we didn't have representation from all of the districts either in terms of teaching staff being there. We did have some conversation on how we would get community member representation on our committee, and we felt that we wanted to put together some type of a notice that would go in the paper, that would go on the public access TVs, that would go on the district websites, just letting people know about the different committees that are currently meeting, letting them know what the purpose of the committee is, and if they would be interested submitting letters of interest to their respective districts, and then those would be brought back to the committee. But we thought we wanted tomorrow night to talk to the other committees and find out if they wanted to be part of that public notice and just get individuals sending letters of interest for any of the six committees. So we'll talk about that a little bit tomorrow night at the Joint Collaborative Meeting. We talked about the purpose of the Curriculum Committee, and then we talked about what some key components of the process would be, how we would go about gathering information to put together. We talked a little bit about the timeframe that we needed to accomplish the task, and we felt that we needed a targeted date for the public vote, but that needs to be provided by the collaborative committee that will be meeting tomorrow night. The meeting actually lasted for almost two hours. There was good conversation going on. But we know that for the Curriculum Committee also, Keith, to really do that, complete that process, that we need to really take our time and put together a well-formulated plan, so...
Yeah. You have to do it right. Take your time and do it right. Otherwise, you're wasting your time.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. Okay, anything else? Which extracurricular have you had a meeting at, Leon?
No, we haven't. Darren was gone last Tuesday, so we didn't have our meeting.
That's right. That's right. Okay. And I see we're going to have to appoint another member, or one of the members, to the collaborative board and also to the finances, financing board also, because Mary was on those, too. So does anybody else want to take any more on?
Mr. Chairman, I have to leave, and I want to thank you for cutting me off. Maybe someday I'll have the privilege to do that to you. Thank you.
Who wants to be on the finances and financing board, or subcommittee, I should say? Anyone?
Well, it would be difficult to serve on two of those because they will probably be meeting the same day.
In different locations.
Different locations. Same time.
But at the same time.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there is anybody that is not on it, or somebody would have to just try to do double duty, but that would be very difficult because of the schedule of the meeting.
Uh-huh. I agree. Well, I could get back from work in time to be on that, the Joint Committee, to be... Just to see what's going on, because I get back about 4:30, and I think it starts at 4:30. Yeah. So if I leave directly from work with no extra work there, I could be here by... Or I could be in Mountain Iron by quarter after four, so I could go on there and take Mary's place. But I'll be coming in full tomorrow because I don't have all the information. But I do have a copy of the Joint Powers Agreement, not the revised one, but this one.
Speaking of that revised one, if you want copies of it, I happen to have copies in my office that I ran off. You can stop and get them at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So I'll give them to you before you even leave.
Okay. That'd be great. So, well, we'll see how it works out on that one committee for now. We need to have somebody on there. Excuse me.
The Joint Collaborative Committee is the one you're talking about replacing Mary on that committee.
Yeah, that's... I can try and make it tomorrow, and then we can decide if somebody else wants to do it. We have to have somebody else on there, too, so we can balance out. Okay. Anyone else? Any discussion, wants, volunteers? Okay, moving on. 11.2, to discuss replacing Mary as a board member, and also we have a vacancy for clerk who gets to sign stuff. So is there anyone who would like to be the board clerk? That's the easiest one.
I can take it on. I've been through the training.
Yeah. Okay, if you want to. I appreciate it. Okay. We need a motion to appoint you then.
You should make a motion to appoint. She's volunteered. Does anyone else want to volunteer?
Anyone else? Okay, we'll make a motion that we appoint Mona as the clerk.
I'll support it.
And I'll second that motion.
Who supported it? Who made it?
I made the motion, either one. Couple of seconds. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing the nulls and favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No. Discussion on how to fill the position. Mary has eight months, nine months left on... She hadn't...
Her position would be up this... I mean, she'll be... She'd have to file again this fall because her position is up.
We can either...
Well, you can do it by taking letters of application. Or there's a nomination process that I'd have to get more information on. But those are the two ways that you can go about appointing someone to fill her vacancy.
So we need to make... Not make a motion, but we need to make the decision of which way you want to do it. If you want to appoint someone, you want to wait until the next board meeting, get more information?
I know in the past, when you've done it, I remember, must have been about four or five years ago, we had a board member resign, and you did it by letter of application then. You just put a notice in the paper that the board was accepting letters of application, and interested people sent letters of interest, and the board looked at those letters of interest, and then I think you chose like three or four individuals that you interviewed at that time.
Yeah. So...
I think that would be the fair way of doing it. There's probably some citizens out there that would be interested, and that would be a fair way of doing it. Take the applications, and then we could... The board wants the interview, and then make a decision.
And it's just for the remainder of her term, which expires on December 31st, so...
So I'll move that we go the right route.
I'll support that.
Okay. We have a motion to advertise for letters of application.
For applications and security and...
Okay, and we have a second also. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing the nulls and favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.0, Superintendent's Report Information.
Okay, just a reminder that there is a Joint Collaborative Committee meeting at 4:30 tomorrow at the Northeast Service Co-op. And then again, next Tuesday, which is the 22nd, there will be committee meetings going on for the six different committees. And tomorrow, I think we do need to bring up, Keith, that if you're there, that we need to make sure that all of those agendas for those committee meetings need to be posted, sent out to all of the board members. I know they're being posted on that BetterTogether min website, but we need to make sure that all committee members are seeing those agendas. On the 23rd, I did notify you that at 4:30, we're going to have a Budget and Finance meeting, which is a committee meeting of the whole. And then immediately following that, I want to schedule a Buildings and Grounds Committee to discuss the proposed summer projects. They did open the bids on Friday. The low bidder is actually a company that we don't have a lot of information on. It's Kaski out of Duluth, and Ryan Turner has requested some additional information because they're fairly unknown.
How do you spell that?
I believe it's K-A-S-K-I. They're a fairly unknown company. So he's asked them to submit additional information that we can request.
Is that the 23rd you said?
The 23rd. So 4:30, we'll start with the Budget and Finance meeting, and immediately following that, we will have our Buildings and Grounds Committee. Ryan will have some additional information with regards to the company. In your board packet, I did provide you some copies of resolutions that were passed by the Musabi East Schools, the Town of Fail, the Virginia City Council. And what those resolutions do is they oppose the Minnesota Department of Transportation's proposal for an intersection of Highway 53 and Highway 135. I put them in there because the Virginia City Council is suggesting that the different entities, governmental entities, pass similar resolutions. I wanted to know if you were interested in having a similar resolution to that to be passed at the next board meeting. And I put some copies, sample resolutions there that we could use.
I think it's a good idea.
Yes, I do, too.
I agree.
Okay, so I'll make sure that we have that on our board agenda for the next meeting.
Because it does involve our students as well, because that could be a very dangerous intersection.
And that's all I have then.
Okay, thank you. Board member topics. Mona, should we start with you?
Yes, fine. And I'm not reading it, but I had to make notes so I wouldn't forget, so... I want to publicly thank our teachers and our staff for all their hard work and dedication. In the last few years, what we've put them through is amazing. They've continued to perform at their usual high level. They've gone through changes of administration repeatedly, it seems. Fortunately, maybe, or unfortunately, we've gone through some changes. We've had curriculum changes. We've had testing procedure changes. Now we're going with a new superintendent, which will create some havoc for a little while. And to add to the dilemma, we've also got a new evaluation system for our teachers and our administrative staff, which I think adds a burden that nobody needs. On top of that, we've got the co-location and without taking sides, and I don't mean it that way at all. It causes a new bit of stress for some folks. I've had calls and emails from some teachers, and not just from our district, that are considering retirement, they're considering change of employment, simply because they're frustrated or they feel out of the loop. So I guess the one thing I would urge administration to do is to keep our staff in the loop as much as is humanly possible, make sure that they know what's going on, try and reduce the stress, and give them an environment that's hopefully going to be a little calmer for them. They put up with so much as it is. So again, I want to publicly thank these folks.
I think you forgot iPad implementation.
Oh, yeah, iPad implementation. That one just... The list is long, but I think they've done an outstanding job of keeping up on those things. And the other item unrelated to that is personally, I'm disturbed anytime there's a public argument with a citizen. I understand the need for decorum and for keeping meetings moving, but I think Mr. Begich over the years has certainly proven that he's active and he's caring, and he puts the needs of the community ahead of everything. And I think it's a... And I think it's a public embarrassment to have an argument with him, and I personally think he's owed an apology.
My argument was not with him. It was someone from the audience who interrupted us. I have most respect for Joe, I've known Joe for many years. And I know, once Joe gets on a roll, he's hard to stop. So, and I understand where he's coming from, because he's down there, he's getting all the information from everybody else. And it was never disrespect for Joe.
But Keith, you tried to cut him off.
Did you, was I, are you recognized yet, Holly?
I don't care.
I know you don't care, that's what you always do.
You cut him off because you didn't like what he had to say.
No, I have, I have no reason to interrupt him.
You don't cut people off if you like what they have to say, but if you don't, you cut him off, period. And he is owed an apology.
Moving on, another board member topic. Anyone else?
None.
Tom?
Going back to the, you mentioned David is all firm from Duluth, they're not that recognized?
Yeah, they're new, Ryan, they have a, DSGW has a Duluth branch too there. So Ryan had called his colleagues in Duluth to find out, you know, if they've worked with them, what they knew about them. They knew very little about them. So there is a very lengthy document that we can request that they fill out, that gives us additional information. They've been asked to complete that document and provide it to the district by next Tuesday.
This is on bids now for the?
It's on the bids for the summer projects, like the Franklin windows, the roofine over in Gilbert, the new entrance in Gilbert.
Did we have any inquiries?
We only had two sealed bids come in.
Two low bids, were there any local bids?
Two sealed bids.
Two sealed bids.
Lancy and Kaski.
How did the bids go out? Did they publish out in the Virginia paper?
Yep, you're required by law.
We followed the procedure for the, for calling for the bids, so, okay. Okay, that was my question there, okay. I guess my other question is, what have we done now to put out our curriculum and advertise to entice new students to come into Davis Gilbert campuses?
We haven't done that.
I've seen it from, I've seen it advertised from, from other districts.
You know, in the past, we've run those big ads like that, and I have to say, we haven't brought in a lot of individual, or students because of that. We just haven't.
Is there anything in the planning stage now to publicize this out to?
We haven't planned to run any big ads like that. If the board wants to, we certainly can put something together.
I think we should. All the other districts have put this out to, put their curriculum out to, to say, we're selling ourselves, I guess, we're selling our school, you know? And I think it should be put out, you know? What is the feeling of the rest of the board?
I don't think it hurts.
I don't think it hurts either.
Is it too late for next year?
No.
No.
No. But it is expensive.
Well.
At the high school level, is, are those classes pretty much filled?
No, no.
We would have room for students everywhere, pretty much, okay? I think we should do something, but at least, at least look at the cost of doing something, maybe know what the alternatives are and what the, if that's.
Yeah, the different sizes, what we can put in there, full, half page, whatever.
I don't know what's even most advantageous. People even look at the newspaper so much anymore, or if there's better.
A lot of people don't even get newspapers.
Or if there's a better way to do it that might be more cost-effective, I don't know.
Well, I know one year, we sent postcards, you know, and that was not a cheap method either. We sent postcards out to surrounding communities and.
Well, a large portion of our area can view Channel 12. If we had our students, I don't know if that's appropriate, use them as an example, have our students put something together that would, that would showcase some things here and their point of view and their perspective. That's what a prospective student would want to know, is how do the kids feel about it?
Marshall School does it all the time.
And they sign that waiver for, like, to be, in the public, in publicity and things like that, so.
And whatever the appropriate use of that is.
Those who feel comfortable with it.
Because in the last ad that we ran, we did have comments that were made by our students in that ad, to try to give it a student perspective.
But there's no reason we couldn't, I mean, just knowing how my grandchildren or young people that I know utilize social media, there's no reason that we couldn't do a YouTube video, or, I mean, there's, the list is long. Everybody uses Vine and Instagram and, I think even our new superintendent tweets. You know, we've got a lot of social media options that perhaps we could utilize, especially if we put the kids in charge and say, "Come up with a plan." They're, they're going to far outshine anything that any of us could think of, that's, that's their area of expertise. And if they do it from their perspective, if it's interesting to them, it would be interesting to other young people. And the kids make the decision.
Why not? That's where most of the kids are, no, it is.
Well.
Social media.
But if, if young people are thinking about making a change, their parents are going to be cooperative as long as they're, they're doing it thoughtfully. And if, if they're enticed by something that we can offer from our students, it may, it may strike a chord with them. It's positive.
At least check into it.
Yeah, that would, that would, I mean. We'll discuss the administrative.
Yeah.
Okay. Any else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Mark? Nothing?
Nothing.
They have nothing. Motion to adjourn.